Okay, now that Chief Deener has arrived, we're calling the meeting to order. Sorry about that, Chief. You were on time. It's all good. If you could stand, if you were able, and join me in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In light of the atrocities that's occurring in Ukraine, at last meeting, we had a moment of silence, and I would just like to take a few seconds tonight just to have again a moment of silence for those individuals that are being killed in the wars on both sides. Okay, next item on the agenda is the public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about these items on the regular agenda will be taken as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. And I have one person, Mr. Crone, that has signed up currently, so we will call you to the podium, Mr. Crone, if you'd like to come up and state your name and address for the record and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Certainly. Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street. Today, you will consider updating the council goals and objectives, and one of those goals, B11B, was to develop a program to provide live streaming and video archiving of city meetings. This came onto the objectives list a couple of years ago, I think, and since that time, we now have an excellent recording system to share these meetings with our neighbors, and I think the press actually uses it now. I haven't seen them in here in person very often since then. I'm sure they appreciate it, covering many cities. I think recording city meetings is a great goal. I'm glad that we did it, but I don't think it's completely done. I know the council decided that streaming is not a super high priority and that there's some technical limitations to doing that, but recording city meetings, recording and archiving of city meetings, this is only one of many city meetings. There's three different forms that the council meets in, and there's other boards and commissions and things like that, and I've only seen city council meetings being published to the Internet. I would like to see more. I would hate to stop the progress that we've made so far. I think we can build on that and make it better as time goes on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. There's no one else signed up, but is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward at this time during public forum? Don't all rush up at once? Okay. I see no one else coming forward, so we'll close out that portion of the public items. The next item is the consent agenda. All items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separate. Is there any council member that would like to have anything removed off the consent?
I would like to have item two removed, please.
Okay. We'll remove item two from the consent agenda per Mr. Caldol. Are there any other items to be removed? Okay, I would entertain a motion for consent. Mr. Silvers.
I'd like to approve the minutes of the February 28, 2022 city council meeting, but excluding item number two for further discussion.
And you're including number three as well with that?
Yeah.
In your motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. And, sorry, I wasn't prepared, I guess.
Items one and three is?
We would, yes. I would like to move that we approve items one and two and hold item, one and three, hold item two for further discussion.
Okay. I think we have a second.
I'll second that we are going to vote on items one and three.
One and three. Thank you, Ms. Hands. Okay.
Thank you, Chris. I was struggling. I'm sorry.
It's all good. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
I am very glad that this will be recorded and archived, and aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Caldol, go ahead.
Yes, just a quick question that we are confident that our LED lights are not too bright, and is there, just if you'd address that, please.
Yes, we did some research and looked at what the other local municipalities use, and they use the 3,000 Kelvin, and there is one that uses 4,000 Kelvin. We have reached out to like the Dark Sky Initiative, and I think there's American Medical Association recommends lights are 3,000 Kelvin or below, and so we've reached out to them. We have these in two separate neighborhoods and have no complaints or issues with those neighborhoods.
Yeah, but is the lumen output comparable to the other neighborhoods, not just the color temperature?
Yes, they're 150 watt comparable, yes.
Are there any other questions for Director McDonald? Yes, Ms. Ryder.
What are the other two neighborhoods or other neighborhoods that those are in?
One is the South Park neighborhood over by Brown Park, and then it would be Antioch Hills between Grahamview and Antioch 69th to 70th. That neighborhood was done last year, so.
No other questions? Okay, thank you, Director McDonald. I would entertain a motion at this time. Mr. Caldol.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve item two on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. I say a second. Ms. Yadrich?
Ms. Whitney's fine.
Sorry. Apologize.
There was a Janet Jackson quote I didn't go for. I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, moving on to the mayor's report, as we're making great time here. I am pleased to be able to offer a proclamation this evening, whereas this is Women's History Month, so the proclamation is as follows. Whereas Women's History Month is an annual celebration of the history and accomplishments of women across the world, and also an acknowledgement of the courage and struggle to attain the same basic human rights as men that still proceeds to this day. And whereas the accomplishments of women in the United States began far before the annual celebration of Women's History Month, as American women of all races and ethnicities fought to not only secure their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also for others in the abolitionist movement, labor rights, voting, and civil rights, which creates a more fair and just society for all. And whereas the theme for Women's History Month 2022 is "Women Providing Healing, Promoting Hope," is a tribute to the many frontline women with healthcare workers and caregivers who have worked tirelessly in the fields of mental and physical health during this ongoing pandemic, and to recognize the many ways that women have provided healing and hope throughout history. And whereas the city of Marion greatly benefits from the women that live, work, and volunteer in our city, and our history has been shaped by many courageous women who made admirable contributions to our community, our future will benefit from the women who continue to provide hope, healing, and representation of equality for the betterment of all. Therefore, in recognition of the accomplishments and contributions of women to our city, state, and nation, I, Bob Pape, Mayor of the City of Marion, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month, and the City of Marion encourage all residents to reflect, promote, and cherish the historical achievements and contributions of all women. Claim this 14th day of March 2022.
You're here.
You do. If it wasn't for women, I wouldn't be here.
There you go.
The next thing on the report coming up, I believe we're going to see, the chief is going to come up and give us our police department's 2021 annual report, and as mayor system used to always notify me, Chief, is that you get five minutes, so.
It's about four and a half more minutes than you needed to do that five minute annual report.
Okay. I deserve that, thank you.
Not saying there's a competition there or anything, but. Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present some highlights of our 2021 annual report. I hope you all had an opportunity to review the report. Staff did an excellent job putting that together. I know I get to stand up here and take credit for it, but it's actually the hard work of the officers and staff that put it together that make it what it is. I just get to put my stamp of approval on it, so appreciate that. So, one of the things is, I know in the annual report, there's a bunch of numbers and information in there, and everybody likes data, but when I give this presentation, I think the important things are more beyond than just the actual calls for service and things like that. One of the things that we really pride ourselves is our community policing endeavor that we do every year, and we've gotten, we're getting better at it every year that we do. We're always finding new ways to become more than just police officers responding to calls, but actually becoming members of the community. So, some of the highlights that we did last year, coming out of 2020, we really wanted to make an effort to get back to that effort, because with the lockdowns, it was really difficult for us to do a lot of our community events, although we did find ways in 2020 to do so. But last year, we attended more than 55 community events total in 2021. We helped, we did eight birthday parades, we attended five neighborhood block parties, hosted national night out, participated in drug take-back events in April and October. Our officers raised almost $22,000 for Special Olympics with silent auction, torch run, and heroes pool. We met with community members at two Coffee with a Cop events in June and October. Four officers volunteered to participate in Operation Rudolph, which is a program presented by the Johnson County NAACP and other Northeast agencies, where we identify families in need at our schools. There was two from each of our schools, and we take them and let them do some shopping at Target and then provide food for the holiday dinner. So, we always enjoy doing that. We fundraised through area businesses to fund that event, so we had lots of participation with that, which we're proud of. We participated, or partnered with Dick's Sporting Goods to keep sporting equipment patrol vehicles, so we can interact with kids and residents while on patrol, throw a football around, stuff like that. That's kind of a neat deal. Just some pictures, you know, coming out of COVID, we still have community members coming in and bringing us food and stuff like that, so that's always welcome and appreciated. It just shows how much our community really does like our police department and value our police department, which means we're doing right. Some crime stats, we did see a little uptick from 2020 in property crimes, crimes against persons, crimes against society. Again, with the lockdowns in 2020, our crime rates did decline with the lockdowns stopping in 2021, and we started seeing an uptick in the crime stats, but it's not with what's been normal. DUI arrests again, 2019, we actually saw a slight decrease, but in 2020, the one thing that did go up was DUI enforcements, and we're about level with 2020 numbers with 210. One notable is Officer Susie, who is one of our traffic officers. He's a DERE officer, which is a drug recognition expert. It's a lot of school, and it's a lot of training. He made 170 DUI arrests last year, which was most of any individual officer in Johnson County, and he received an award from MAD for his efforts, so glad to have him out there keeping the streets safe. Top crash locations, nothing's really changed on this. Shawnee Mission Parkway, John Strife, 75th Street, Antioch, and 67th Street, still our top accident locations. That's where the majority of our traffic is, so that kind of goes without saying. Every year, the police department awards an Officer of the Year award. The good thing about this award is it doesn't come from me. It's not my decision. It's not even my captain's decisions. It is a nomination by their peers. So, Officer Ikoff is our 2021 Officer of the Year, nominated by his peers, reviewed by a panel of supervisors and officers, and they awarded him the 2021 Officer of the Year. I personally am very thankful that they did that. I think Gary has been more than deserving of this award on several occasions. I've worked with him for 30 years that he's been here, and he's definitely deserving of it. I'm going to read you a little bit of what the officers, why they nominate him, and then I'm going to ask Gary to come up here and receive his award in front of the council. Officer Ikoff is a team-driven officer. He's someone his peers, supervisors, administrators will go to due to his vast knowledge. Not only does Gary fulfill his duties as police officer, but he's taken on the role of IT for the department. He's the go-to guy for fixing computer programs or repairing equipment, mostly can't be resolved until he comes to work to save the day. He has filled in on supervisory duties for shifts until a police supervisor comes on service. He does all these things without complaint. He is the glue that keeps us together, and we're lucky to have him on the Marion Police Department. Gary? Thank you, Gary.
Chief, does he have anything to say about his 30 years serving for you?
Could be your last day, but go right ahead. Want to say something about serving with me for 30 years? He's smart.
You can have more than five minutes.
Last year, we did have one lifesaving award. I believe we brought Officer Mueller here in front of the council to award him that. Again, he responded to a 911 call, referenced somebody that was electrocuted on the job. He applied AED and was able to bring the subject back after having no pulse. He did a really good job, and I've nominated him for a couple of awards through the state of Kansas, so hopefully, keep your fingers crossed, see if he gets those. We brought on three new employees last year, Officer Patton, Officer Latka, and CSO Jose Meramontes. They're all working out just great, and we're happy to have them onboard. 2022, what can we expect? Well, we're going to continue to our efforts to reduce crashes through enforcement, education, increased community events. One thing we didn't get to do last year that we really liked putting on is the Police Academy, Sisters Police Academy. We are planning to put that on again this year. Looking forward to it. We're going to have some more Coffee with the Cops and other events, and continued partnership with the schools. So, it was one thing in 2020 we really messed out on. We had a Hi-Fi Friday. Every Friday, we'd go up there, hi-fi the students as they were coming to school, and then we spent time at lunches and other events. 2021, we tried to bring that back, but with some of the issues, we had to change Hi-Fi Friday into Thumbs Up Thursday. So, but we were planning on doing more in our schools, because we, our officers really do enjoy going up there and having that interaction with the students. It's good for them, and it's good for the kids, so. Any questions about our annual report? Be happy to answer them now.
Do we have any questions for Chief McLaughlin?
You're going to let me off that easily?
Oh, no, we've got something.
Must have been living right.
Well, no, you did an excellent job, and please thank the whole department itself for the job that they do. They make the city of Marion what it is today, and it's, I think our citizens really appreciate what you guys do out there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
If I could add to that, as Chief walks away, you know, I think it's absolutely critical that we spend the time and the effort, and I personally appreciate the effort that the department puts into the community policing. I think it's absolutely critical that the interactions that our residents, our students, anyone has with the police department is positive when it absolutely can be. I mean, no one likes it when I'm going 55 in a 35, and that's the interaction that I have with the police department. But it's also important to keep in mind that interaction with the police department might be the only interaction with local government that some people have, and if that is a positive experience like we hope it is, it reflects well on all of us. And so I think it's absolutely critical that we continue to invest in that whole concept of community policing. So, I do appreciate the chief and all the folks, the men and women in his department that go out there and put a positive face on not just policing, but local government, what we all do. So, thank you.
Well said, Mr. Engel. Let's give him a round of applause from the police department. Thank you. It was a little over five minutes, Chief, but that's okay. All right, let's see. Moving on, we have, look, select the next item. Mr. Engel has approached, you already know, is improvement of the city council budget goals and objectives. Mr. Engel.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The next item on the agenda is the approval of your fiscal year 23 city council budget goals and objectives. Each year, staff solicits budget goals and objectives from the city council early in the budget process to help guide staff as they start to develop the budget. If there's any specific directions, left turns, or things that council would like to see placed in the budget as we start to build the budget. We generally make some recommendations at the staff level, but we also, again, incorporate as much staff input as we receive and after we have conversations with the council members, the things that we agree makes sense to go in there, go in there at least for consideration for the council. This particular year, we've got a couple of different categories. First one's going to be modification. Simply that is, we're just for the annual spring recycling event. It's to delete spring. This year, it's going to be in the fall, so not that we're not going to do the recycling event, it just seems silly to tie us to the spring unless spring is absolutely where the council wants us to have that recycling event. But kind of reading the importance that the event has to the community, I think the council would be supportive of having it anywhere that we can pull it off. So, that, I took the liberty of just deleting that word. Hopefully, council would agree with that. Couple other wholesale deletions that staff is recommending is the provide live stream and video archiving of city meetings. That is something that we have already accomplished. We kind of modified what we wanted to do with the live streaming, but we do have the video archiving, so it makes sense, at least from a staff perspective, to delete that. 12B, which is investigate use of survey and polling tools, we had a conversation about that. We settled on a service, and when we decide we want to use it, we know which service we're going to use, so leaving that in the budget. Goals and objectives didn't make a whole lot of sense. And then conduct a strategic analysis of where EV charging stations could go. We have installed four EV charging stations. We know where a couple other ones might eventually go in our community, so leaving that as a standing goal didn't make a whole lot of sense to staff. Again, these four items, this modification, these three deletions are from staff, so feel free to tell staff that they're wrong, but it seemed like it made a whole heck of a lot of sense. Then we've got a couple additions to add that we're recommending, again, solicited from council members that we've heard from. The first one is to work with a vendor to negotiate a discounted curbside compost pickup. I would envision this being very similar to what we did with Benjamin Lawn and Garden, where we negotiated a citywide rate for leaf pickup. So, we would imagine we would do something like that. We would solicit input from vendors that are out there, find one that makes the most sense that would actually give a citywide discount, and then that would be something that we could push out in our communications channels and say, hey, these are, there's a discounted rate if you'd like to have curbside pickup. Another one would be to support the public art initiative or re-support the public arts initiative, kind of, I guess, fund that might be a more accurate statement. We would imagine we would fund it to the tune that we funded the previous one. We put it back in the five-year CIP, depending on if funding is available. So, place it back in the CIP, so fund the art program, and then a second one would be to investigate the crafting of a 1% for the arts policy for all construction, not just city, not just incentivized, but all. And so, any construction that would come in, we would say, you need to spend 1% of the arts, or it's quite possible we would still investigate the policy. Some places, do a donation to the arts program. If you don't want to do arts on your location, you want to construct a business here, we're going to ask you for 1%. You can either sink it into your property, or you can donate it to the arts program, and that might fund our arts program if, at some point down the road. That is your additions that, from council members that we solicited from deletions and modifications from staff. I'm happy to address any of those. I think anybody has any specific questions, or council members might be able to?
Councilmember Neal, I had a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Neal.
On the deletions, I kind of, the question whether we should be deleting, completely deleting 1.1B and 1.2B, I don't think either one of those, what we were trying to get at with some of that, at least what I was interested in seeing, I don't think is fully something we should take out of our goals. We've made some improvement for sure, but I would propose that we leave in 1.1B with the following change, strive to improve digital access to city meetings. I think that's more general, but I think it also addresses the fact that there may be other things that we do want to be transparent about and that we should consider in our look at budgets in the future, ways that we can possibly do some of that. I particularly think a lot of information is exchanged in city work sessions, and I think that those should also be, but I may not, you know, I don't know how others feel about that, but I think that just striking that whole idea is premature. And then on the second one, investigate the use of survey polling tools. I think we've investigated and we've got access to some, but I think we should still develop some policy around their use, and so again, that possibly could be modified in some way to reflect that, that we are going to try to utilize these tools that we now have access to in some reasonable way and not just drop it from the goals. So, those are two points that I feel should be considered.
I would address those just from a staff standpoint. The first one, if it's to strive, I mean, that, we would need some direction on that if we wanted to or we don't want to, because this, these are budget goals, we would need to put some sort of funding in the budget. The second one, if we're just developing a policy that doesn't have any fiscal note to it, we can just do that independent of the budget. I mean, we can place it in the budget goals, but it's not, we're not placing any money in the budget to develop that, it's not tied to something specifically in the budget, but we can, it's up to council's discretion if you'd like it in there. We can absolutely keep that.
Isn't there a cost to, for the survey? I mean, I know there was some cost, there was a relatively minor cost, or wasn't there some cost?
There is a cost to actually have the survey when we decide to use it.
Right.
But there's no cost to the policy. So, if staff was directed?
My point is, if it was in the budget goals, then it would be easier when the time comes and something does come up that, you know, would warrant it, there's something right in the budget goals that would address the funding of it.
Okay, Ms. Yadrich, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to comment on that. David, I see where you're coming from, but I think we could potentially loop all that in, since we've agreed to a tool, we've agreed to fund it when we want to use it. Couldn't that all be covered under 1.1, facilitate better communication between the city and its citizens without having to put a more vague financial goal in, now that we've achieved the? vague financial goal in now that we've achieved the decision of what tool to use when we want to use it?
You know, possibly. But like I said, I just wanted to raise that and see what you all think.
Does anyone else in the council have any additional comments they'd like to make? Ms. Yodrich, go ahead.
Just keep rolling. To follow up on the public art piece, I have a clarification, well, a question that needs a clarification and then another question. So, the 1%, would that separate, would that include the downtown PSP project as a project that would be encompassed in the 1% has to go to public art? Or is that a separate kind of deal since it's just like a road pavement project?
Sure. Until we put the policy together, it's nothing. I mean, as we develop the policy, there'd be several, I mean, there would be options. We could say, hey, if it's, if it's public, it's one thing. If it's private, something, you know, I mean, we, that would, that would have to be part of the policy development. I mean, I would envision likely if we're already funding an art program, for us to also do 1% in addition to that would seem extra. I mean, if we're, if we're already proposing to put.
Yeah, that's my question is if we're doing a project like that, do we make 1% in addition to what we have? Or is it similar to what we did last time where we have a committee that selects projects on sites and, and that whole?
I would, I would, my gut would tell me it'd be probably the, the former. I mean, like, but until we write the policy, I don't know. Similar to when we came up with the community center, we didn't have a policy for art. We just said, hey, we're spending a lot of money here. Art is something that we appreciate as a community. It would make sense that this go there. And so, we engaged the art committee to help us through that process. So, I, I would imagine that for large public projects, but it's, to, for that to be covered in a policy, because Marion Drive is going to be different. When we redid 67th Street, that's not really like downtown Marion.
Right.
So, to me, a street project is a street project. If we decide that we've sank enough money into a sink, a street project to make the street project now something, a destination type of street, then we have, we would have the art funding to put art next to the street or incorporated in the street. But, excuse me, anytime we do a project, we can come back to council and go, hey, this is, this is more than 55th Street. I mean, I don't, I wouldn't imagine we'd do art on 55th Street and it's a cars project just like downtown Marion.
Right.
So, my gut tells me that they would be separate. But that will be once we get to fund, once we get to the policy level.
Now, it's, I would agree with that because it's not really new construction.
Right. It seems more destination specific, but we are using cars and potentially using cars and grant money. And so, I'm wondering where the line blurs and if it is separate funding or.
And I, I think we don't know yet.
Yeah.
But I do think that we have enough people here that we need to restate the way we funded the art program before was $100,000 per year for five years.
And that's how it started.
That's how it started.
And we added more. It ended up being about 126 a year. So, it'd be about 565 if we funded it the way it was.
Right. Because I don't know that we had that.
Sure. We need to make sure the funding's available before staff comes back with a number.
I just, this is the way we did it before.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
I was actually wondering, or I would like, if we could maybe adjust the wording a little bit for F point, 1.4, because we state all new construction. I think it'd be better to specify it's corporate and retail development and construction, just so there's no confusion. So, if someone decides to build a new house, all of a sudden they have to donate 1% to an art fund. I mean, I'm sure when it's written out, that would be in there, but I just.
Tie it to new construction or major renovations. There are certain thresholds that a project meets if it.
Right.
Has to go through code review.
I'm sorry. Well, I was gonna say if someone's building like a new apartment complex, maybe that is something we would want. That's different from commercial and retail.
Right. But if someone's, say, tearing down a house to build a different house, I think that should be excluded from this.
I agree.
I would say those would be things that we would bring back when we develop the policy. Those are policy things that we haven't got to yet. I guess the question is, do you want to develop the policy? That would be the more important question.
Mr. Calhoun, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm a little confused as to where the budget impact is on this.
Well, it's just tied to re-energizing the art program. So, it's kind of coupled into.
But I'm not expecting to see in our budget for next year, a line item that says, here's money going to the art program.
That, that will be, yes, there will be, if this ends up in the council goals and objectives, we will bring back a CIP that has some amount of money in at least 2023, if not the next five years to fund an art project.
Okay, so it's beyond the 1% of construction.
There's really two things. There's two things at play here. There's, there's fund the art program. And then there's kind of coupled with that, create a policy for 1%, to fund the art. So, it's, it's two things kind of rolled into reinvigorating art in Marion.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
And those, those things would all be part of the policy. We can't, until we have the policy, we can't really say what it will or won't be because we don't have a policy.
Well, and at this, at this time, we don't have any specific numbers for what we would put into the next year's budget.
No, we would, we would, we would look at it. It would probably be very similar to what we funded it before. We know that that amount worked. We know, and we would bring it back for consideration at budget time if it makes it into the goals and objectives tonight. And the council at that time could say, we don't want to do this. We want more. We want less. We want two years versus five years, one year versus three. And we would be able to address all those. This is just simply so when we start to build the budget, we know, we better make sure we, we earmark something in there.
So, what we know from this is that we will have that discussion.
If, if, if this gets approved tonight, yes, sir.
Thank you.
This is council member Neil again, if, if I get an opportunity.
Go ahead, Mr. Neil.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the language in 1.4 also because, and it may, it may have been addressed. It's hard to hear some of you unfortunately. But there's some of the questions I would have about this is, how much money are we talking about? 1% for the arts policy on all new construction? I really don't quite understand exactly what that means in terms of dollars. And, and number two, the last, you know, go around of this was very divisive in the community in some, in some respects because of some of the, you know, artisan in the eye of the beholder and all of that. And the selection process and some of the, there were some transparency hiccups in terms of a couple of, you know, at least one of the projects that I was aware of that kind of was decided and, you know, kind of, the first time we, the council saw it was when we were asked to vote on it, things like that. So, the implementation of the, the process of commissioning the art and how the community is to be involved in that is something that I'm concerned about and I want to address, you know. So, I'm, I just, I don't feel comfortable yet with understanding what this is. And I don't know if anybody can kind of explain it better, sort of, who, you know, staffs, you know, has been around through this process. What are, basically, what, what are we, what are we talking about here? What, what do you envision?
Ms. Yodrich, would you like to address that?
David, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, just to, I'm trying to speak loudly so you can hear. So, the idea here is that we don't have a dollar amount yet. And what we'd be talking about tonight is approving the goal so that council, or so that staff can draft a policy that we can look at prior to approving the budget and the policy. So, we don't have those answers right now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it does kind of make sense. That's why I'm asking. I'm just not clear.
And, and I guess maybe for my clarification from a staff perspective, really, is what staff understands yet, I mean, is these are two items. They're in one sentence. Maybe we should devise, kind of split them out. They could be inner, you know, we, the, the council could say, we don't want to do 1% for the arts right now, but we do want to fund an art program. So.
Right, exactly.
So, so, so perhaps coupling those together is, was, was incorrect on my part. But, but so the, they're really two separate things. I believe they're two separate things. So, the idea would be, you would have two things. The city would fund art and then we would have a policy that said new development in the city, or whatever it says. I mean, right now, we're, we're looking for direction. Is it new development? That somehow there would be a mechanism that new development would fund art. We're calling it 1% for the arts. We might end up calling it half a percent for the arts. We might end up calling it 2% for the arts. And it might be, you put the art on your location. It might be just commercial. It might be major renovation. That will all be part of the policy. But, but, but the two are not related. We are not, the, the funding that goes in the budget for art will not be the equivalent in my mind of what 1% of what future new construction would be. It would just be to pass a pro arts policy that says new development will fund art.
And I, I would, I completely agree with the fact that these two things need to be separated. And I think that actually putting a number in like we have here in the, in the budget goals is probably premature. I think that's actually a budgeting item itself, not, I mean, I think that's, I agree that the objectives would be, you know, to establish some sort of a public art program. And then a second objective or second part of that would be to derive the funding from that, for that effort by some form of, of funding mechanism tied to new construction. And I think that's good enough.
I want to, I want to point out that there's, there's two items that we've talked about. And the first one says to investigate a construction cost funding for the arts. We're talking about funding for the arts through CIP as well as an arts program that will be dedicated to new construction projects based on some percentage of the cost of the building.
Most popular being 1% for the art. That's what most of the policies that I've seen are called 1% for the arts.
I think, I think to clear up everybody's confusion, we make them two items. We say it's to investigate a arts program based on the construction cost of the project and we go forward from there.
And, sorry.
Better go ahead.
And then can we keep them, separate them into two separate policies to help clear confusion? The first one saying, let's look at the CIP, so city funding for five years or whatever that is. And then the second one saying a percentage of new construction, investigate a policy for a percentage of new construction to fund artwork on whatever.
So, like 141, 142.
Right.
Different line.
Just to keep them separate. So, if everyone is on board with one and not the other, then that will help us kind of have clearer guidelines in my mind.
So, so, so we would say 14A would be fund the art program as we have in the past at some amount that we will determine once we put the budget together to fund art projects. City-funded art projects on city property modeled off of what we've done before. We'll call that one, we'll call that 14A. 14B, we will say investigate a, a some percent for the arts project that we, that may or may not be for new construction. We'll, we'll wordsmith that. But investigate a policy for private funding of the arts.
We have like a show or just an out ahead. That's what we're looking for.
Yes.
I think you've got your direction, Mr. Engel.
Okay.
Yeah. This is council member Neil. I would prefer something like that than, than the way it's written now.
Okay. I, we, we can absolutely do that and that'll help clear things up and let us, let us divorce the two things from one another so they're not related.
If we could circle back, Mr. Engel, before we move on in reference to Mr. Neil's comments on the previous item in reference to.
Yeah, I need a motion also. I'm just.
Oh, yeah.
I need a motion.
Okay, sure. Well, yeah, well, that's for the whole thing though, right?
Right.
With the end. We're gonna, yeah. So, I, is there any concern or question of, from other council people of, we deleted those others and of some amalgamation of those two of something less?
This is, this is council member Neil again.
Yes, Mr. Neil, go ahead.
I know, I mentioned two. I'm sorry, do, am I, do I have the?
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead. You're on, you're on line. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, the, the language I was wanting to see in 1.1 was to not strike B and, but to replace it was strive to improve digital access to city meetings. We can always improve. And I don't know if, if, you know, I didn't, we didn't really, nobody responded to that. So, before we end this, I hope we get some feedback on that.
Ms. Chaveta, I think you had your name first.
Yeah, I believe Whitney addressed that in saying that 1.1A kind of hits that mark in, in my mind as well. So, I think you had said that, right? We could kind of lump that into 1.1A.
Yeah, I feel like the goal's been achieved, I guess, is my point in that specific wording. But it, it continues under 1.1.
Yeah, we don't stop doing these things.
Right. Like, we, we've selected a program. We did that. Can we do better? Maybe. In, in, in terms of what we heard during public comment, are there more meetings that we could potentially record and put on YouTube? Maybe, you know. So, I don't think we should lose sight of that. But Bruce.
Yeah. Go ahead.
But they don't, we, we can do better, but I don't believe they have a budget impact.
It wouldn't have a budget impact.
So, they may be a, a goal, but not a budget goal.
If you want AV upstairs, I mean, but that budget would go, would be to provide AV coverage to upstairs or investigate AV coverage of upstairs, which we have, but the acoustics are horrible. So, while we can get video in there, you can't get audio in there.
Right.
Or at least audio is not good.
Right. So, so again, I don't believe there's a budget impact for what we want to do next year.
That's what, I think we're all in agreement on that. Yeah. David, does that make sense to you?
No, it makes sense. I, like I said, I'm, I'm specifically, you know, interested in making sure that we, we, we do focus on the digital aspect of our outreach as well. That's all. And that's fine. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with, with the will of the council on that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Neil. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Engel.
The next, the next one would have been the, if we, do we want to, it's not a budget goal, but council member Neil had asked about modifying 12B in terms of developing a policy for the use. That would, I mean, that would be good direction to provide to council if you want us to develop a policy to govern when and how we use the polling software. But that's not really a budget goal either. But I'm just addressing council member Neil's suggestion.
And I'm okay with that answer.
Yeah, I think we will need a policy, but listing it in here probably unless someone else sees it as need. I'm not seeing any heads. Checking yes, I think we can move on with that.
So, what we, so what I'm hearing is we can delete spring, delete the three deletions that are recommended as, as deletions. 1.3B is fine with the curbside composting. We want to split 1.4 into two items. The first one being funding the, the CIP to support the public art program. The second, 14B would be to craft, to investigate crafting, I'll wordsmith it, but essentially what I need to know from a staff perspective is, we need to look into crafting some sort of a policy for private funding of the arts when it comes to construction, whether that's reconstruction, new construction. And that would be what the policy is. What we call it in here will be a broad summary of what we're investigating. Is, is that?
That's good.
Is that accurate read of what will the council would be in terms of budget goals and objectives, at least as stated thus far?
Think so.
Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to make a motion if you're ready.
Well, Ms. Hands, would you go ahead and? I will entertain a motion.
I move that the council approve the fiscal year 23 budget goals and objectives with the changes as we've discussed.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Council member Leahy.
Aye.
Council member Neil.
Aye.
Council member Ryder.
Aye.
Council member Silvers.
Aye.
Council member Yodrich.
Aye.
Council member Chaveta.
Aye.
Council member Hands.
Aye.
Council member Callahan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like our, who is handling the next item? The one-time employer bonus.
I will be handling that while I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Engel.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the city council approved an agreement with McGrath for a salary survey. That salary survey will essentially tell us if our employees are being paid within the market rate for those particular positions and if our, if our compensation to include our benefit package is competitive and if we're making sure that we're keeping the faith with our employees, which I believe we, we will be close, but we might need to make some adjustments. But it's important that we do these things. We haven't done one since 2013. The council, as we just covered budget goals and objectives, the council does have a standing budget goal to recruit and retain the best. standing budget goal to recruit and retain the best talent within Northeast Johnson County and to appropriately fund competitive compensation packages and train employees to be the best asset that they can be. I think that we've done that and we've proven time and time again that we take care of our employees. What we're facing now in terms of being able to take care of our employees is an external threat that we haven't faced, at least in my time here, and that is the fact that we've got a lot of vacancies. We've got a lot of, a lot of vacancies in just the market, let alone in our organization. We're starting to face a run on employees from not just our traditional competition, which is other units, local government, but the private industry. We've got folks that are looking for CDL drivers. We've got people that are looking for security. I never thought that we would be competing for police officers with high V grocery stores, but that is a reality. KU Med is a reality. And it's important that we continue to be competitive in the market because we are, we, we deliver services. That's what we do. Our people are our most expensive, but also our greatest asset. And I think you'll agree with me that time and time again, when we get our satisfaction surveys, we set the bar and we only set the bar because we have great people and we have those great people, not just because we pay them the best, we take care of them. I think we have a great culture. Team Merriam is, is something that we live by. It's not just something that we say. But clearly pay is something that is on top of everyone's mind from time to time. And with inflation and with the, the competition for good workers, we've got to keep up. I personally don't think there's a problem. I think it's a good thing that, that workers are being empowered. It makes it awful tough to run an organization full of people when, when workers are being empowered and there's inflationary pressures and market pressures that drive prices up. But that's occurring. And a lot of other employers are starting to get inventive in the way that they compensate and reward their employees. And we're no different. We're looking at those things and are there different ways that we can show our appreciation to our employees, not just in compensation, but in other ways? So one of the things that we're doing is again, having a salary survey to make sure that we're structurally compensating our people in the appropriate ways. But that's not going to take effect until 2023. So in 2023, or at least as part of the budget process for 2023, we plan to bring forward a recommendation of how do we remain competitive with pay ranges and perhaps people that need to move within those pay ranges. But in the interim, gas is $4 a gallon. Inflation is a real, is a real, I don't know if it's here to stay, but it's here today. And so it's something that our employees face every day, not just at the pump, but the cost of goods when they go to the grocery store. So one of the things that staff is recommending, or I am recommending, is that we do a one-time retention bonus. The retention bonus would be that's being recommended is 4.15%. The way that we came upon that is a blended Midwest CPI from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. If you take all items, which is 7.9% inflation, at least January numbers, and you mix that with the all items, less food and money, or less food, uh, food and energy, which I don't know why that's even a statistic, but that is a valid statistic that gets used, which is 6.4. That blended together is 7.15. We have budgeted and are awarding 3% merit increases this year. If you take the 3% that we've committed to our employees minus that inflation rate of 7.15, you get 4.15. I believe that it's very, very appropriate to show that appreciation and to our employees and to let them know that we appreciate all the hard work they've done the last several years and that we are doing a salary survey that we haven't done since 2013 and, you know, just essentially thank them for what they've done. I think when you look at how I'm recommending that we fund it, we fund it, we've got about $820,000 of unspent salary from last year. That's quite a bit of money and that's because we have positions we can't fill. That's not work that didn't get done. That's work that we pushed off on other employees and we made up for, you know, with, with the workforce that we have. So funding for a 4.15% one-time bonus, just at the base, we're not increasing anybody's salary, would, would, we would suggest being paid for out of contingency to the tune of $309,000. I think I'm asking for a little bit more than that, just to make sure we've had a few employees that have signed on since 11. And we'll be using the 123121 salary because people still, some people have already received a 3% increase this year. We want to make sure that it's an apples to apples comparison. So we're going to go back to the last day of the year, or at least that's what we're recommending to staff or recommending to council. Any questions? I'm very supportive of this. I think, I think it would go a long way to showing our employees that we, we value them, that their success is our success and our success is their success. And at the end of the day, they're the ones that are out there really making us look good. As Chief said, I get to get up here and go, hey, look at all these great things, but I'm, I'm not the one that does all that. I just want to be the one that recognizes the fact that there's a lot of folks out there that are helping us out.
Yeah, I would just reiterate that I agree wholeheartedly with what you've said this evening in reference to the good job that the, the employees do, that they make the city. And it's in light of the pandemic and all the extra things they had to do and they were still out there, you know, having to do their jobs no matter what. So I think it's a good deal. Does anyone on the council have a question? Mr. Caldwell for Mr. Engel.
You know, again, trying to understand next year's budget impact. This is a one-time thing, so it only hits the 2,000, this year's budget.
It does.
And we're anticipating that the salary survey, survey says that everybody's going to get whatever percent raise and that's where we'll see it when we do 2023 budgets.
Yeah, so we'll play 2022 out as we budgeted. Everyone's going to get a 3% increase. This is money that really is coming from rollover money from 2021 that we did not anticipate when we built that, when we built the 22 budget. What we will do is once we have the results of the, the survey, we will come back with the survey and we'll say, okay, well, we're going to recommend a 4% increase for everybody, but we might have this department or these three positions or these five positions that we need to move. Because a salary survey, you've got not just the market analysis and where you fall in the market, but there's also internal equities. There's also how, how compression and issue. And if we move people in there and I'm a two-year employee and I'm making $30,000 a year and I get moved up to 33, but you've got a six-year employee that's at 33, we've got to help, you know, we've got to decompress that. So there will be some movement likely.
There'll be all of that movement, plus the survey may say that everybody got a 4% raise like we're doing.
That is likely and then, and we will recommend that, but part of the salary survey, they're also going to give us if we ask them to as part of the, the cost. How do we phase that? I mean, I, I think that we've done a pretty good job of staying competitive. I don't expect in my heart and in my mind that we're very far off. We might have some positions where we go, hey, we've, there's been some movement in the market, we need to make it right. So I don't anticipate it's going to be a, you know, it's not going to be a $2 million fix, but I mean, it, it'll, it could be substantial. And, and I'm of the opinion, if we do a survey and it says that we need to do this to be competitive, I'm probably going to come back to council and say, this is what we need to do.
I would anticipate it's, it's going to be this amount plus.
Very well could be next year. But this is going to go a long way to, to kind of holding the faith with our employees and saying, hey, we recognize that, you know, you've, you've rolled up your sleeves and you've done, you've come to work and you've come to work the next day and you've come to work the next day for the last two years and.
I agree.
Continued to make us the, the fantastic place to live, work and play that, that we are.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Neal.
Go ahead, Mr. Neal.
Get a chance.
You're up.
Yeah, I've, I have recently been speaking with a city administrator about a topic that sort of touches this and that has to do with some, it's going to seem mundane, but some changes to the Department of Transportation requirements for obtaining commercial driver's licenses. And since our Public Works employees, most, most of them are required to have Class A CDLs and the difficulty of obtaining a CDL has increased dramatically as of February 6th of this year. And since there seems to be a shortage of truck drivers, I think we have a special vulnerability there. And I think this will probably help in some way to address that, even though the city of Merriam has, after my inquiry with, with Mr. Ingalls, has, I was really impressed with the proactive stance the city has taken in that regard. That doesn't mean that they're going to take away the pressure from all the other organizations that have not taken the same proactive stance. Essentially, most CDLs will require training now that it costs about $4,000 and it was offered commercially to be able to get a CDL license. So we, we have that handled, which I give my kudos to the, the staff for, for handling that in advance. But that's still not going to take away from all the pressure that that creates for hiring away our, our people. So again, I'm, I think that there's probably some strong merit to doing this.
Thank you. Does any other council members have any questions for Mr. Engel? Do you have anything else to add before we call for a vote?
I do not. Thank you for your consideration. Ms. Hands.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a one-time employee retention bonus in an amount not to exceed $320,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
I to applaud your proactivity and aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And please pass on to our great staff of the great job they're doing and hopefully this will show them that we do appreciate them.
I will, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Director Dyer, I guess you have the next item on the agenda?
You have the next item on the agenda. Next item on the agenda is a presentation on, on the street, proposed street design for Merriam Drive. As you all are well aware, we have a couple of projects going on in Merriam Drive. First of all, at the Plan Sustainable Places project, that is kind of the, putting the conceptual idea, conceptual design for Merriam Drive. And then we also have as well the, as I get to my presentation. Also have the actual design of Merriam Drive that's going on by BHC, our engineer. So their, the engineers are currently doing the design of Merriam Drive, the, the engineering of Merriam Drive for the purposes of doing a bid process to go out to have Merriam Drive redesigned, excuse me, rebuilt in 2023. But right now we have a little bit of a timing issue. BAC has done all the survey work. They've done all the initial engineering work. They need the conceptual part to take that concept that's being put together by the Plan Sustainable Places project and put that into engineering, engineering and do the design for that so they can put it out to bid. The PSP process, the advisor committee is doing a lot of work on that, doing the concept of it. They recently had a meeting back in February. What I'm going to present to you is what they saw in the meeting, at that meeting. But the actual final project, project, that product won't be until later, until April. But we need to get the concept on to the engineers thing, start working on it. So this evening I have a presentation on the street design, the conceptual street design. At the end of my presentation, desire obviously after answering questions is to get some consensus from the council that they're comfortable with the conceptual design. And I'm getting ready to show you to give to the engineering firm, the BHCs that had them start doing the design. Before I just go into it, just a couple more things, just kind of want to remember that we know that there is a public open house that's going to be happening. The advisory committee still has another meeting planned, so there could still be a few tweaks and changes that happen to the conceptual plan. Also understand that the consulting firm that's been doing the PSP work, Confluence, took all the best information they had available, so AMES information and things like that, but that is not survey information. So what goes from the conceptual to actual engineering to be built, could also be some tweaks in that because as they, we get better information on the survey, there may be some changes that go along with that. So again, kind of keep those things in mind. Planning Sustainable Places Advisory Committee's been working very hard. They've been taking a lot of different ideas and concepts from the comprehensive plan in 2040, also desire for the city to become more, more bike and pedestrian friendly. Also taking some ideas from our community of all ages that we've just become bronze with. So taking all those ideas and putting together the concept for this. So just kind of setting the stage a little bit, again, remind you, 2040 comprehensive plan does talk about downtown, does place a high amount of importance on downtown. Talks about wanting to make sure to keep it historic downtown, support long-term redevelopment for it, bring in mix of uses, also recognizes our existing uses and our existing businesses there and want to try to give everybody the opportunity to, you know, make Merriam, Downtown Merriam a place and a destination. So also along that, in the comprehensive plan, talks about some lane uses. Bring this up because this is really going to, I'm going to touch it real briefly. The PSP plan is also going to touch on the lane uses and things like that. So one of the things that's not a struggle, but one of the, the things that the advisory committee and Confluence has been working with is we have this 2040 vision out here, what Merri, what Downtown Merriam, what we'd like to strive for. And then we had the immediate, we're going to redo Merriam Drive in 2023. So how do we make those two work together? How do we make sure that what we do in 2023 doesn't impede, doesn't hinder the incremental thing, changes that happen to downtown? So that's been something that has been an interesting work and I think the advisory committee has done a very good job on. So I just put this up to, I think everybody's kind of seen this in different, different phases, different iterations. So this is kind of, again, long range, 20, 30 years from now in Downtown Merriam, potentially what it could look like, just to give you a little bit of a point of reference. I-35 is at the top of your picture. This is Turkey Creek. If you remember, there's some, in some artist renderings of adding some additional space down here to, to maybe help mitigate the flood plain. So you can see really a, a complete redesign, realignment of Merriam Drive along this area. And this is again, that long 20, 30-year viewpoint. So how can we do Merriam Drive in the next two years to help facilitate this? So this next part is really meat and potatoes of the whole thing. This is really the conceptual ideas that the PSP committee has put together and these are the things we'd like to hand off to the engineering firm. So starting up here to the north, this is obviously, excuse me, Merriam Drive right down the middle. This is Farmer's Market to the top, Johnson Drive's down here at the bottom. So one of the things that again, trying to work with is trying to increase pedestrian, trying to increase bikability of it, also trying to increase amount of green space and greenery in, in downtown. So walking through here, I guess the other thing I also want to point out was the advisory committee is also trying not to acquire any new right of way, but yet still trying to get more parking, but you're still trying to get all these facilities in there. So as consultants like that, they're kind of trying to thread the needle through all those goals. And again, I think they've done a very good job of this. So starting up here at the north, again, Farmer's Market, heading down Merriam Drive, a couple of things we'll notice right off the bat, shared use path here, again, for bicycling pedestrians on the west side. It's important to bring up here at the ti, at this point is also, as you know, there is the North Merriam Drive project that is going on, and that will not go away. There we go. North Merriam Drive project that is going on, that is the Merriam Connection Project. That's a project we are coordinating with Kansas City, Kansas, as well as Overland Park and Mission. And we want to make sure that the two, those two plans where they meet, meet and don't say, hey, the paths should be on this side and the other plan says another path should be on that side. So just wanted to assure you that we've had a number of conversations. Olson's Consulting is doing the North Merriam Drive. Confluence is doing Downtown Merriam. We've had a number of conversations and these plans are going to meet up. The plan does show for North Merriam Drive from a portion of Merriam that the shared use path being on the east side. So you can also start to see a little bit here, some angled parking in front of Farmer's Market, but as we travel further to the south, notice that pedestrians and bicycles will have the option of maybe taking the crosswalk and coming down the east side or just staying on the west side. The west side is advantageous and it has a pretty large sidewalk on that side, so allow for the ability for bicyclists and pedestrians, if they wish to, to continue down that. A lot of times bicyclists, especially families and small kids, don't really want to ride on the street, so that'll be an opportunity to stay off the street. But as you can see here, there are sharrows that we're going to put on, we propose to put on Merriam Drive, that's to donate that it is a bike route and that a lot of times of times more experienced bicyclists, bicyclists are comfortable with being on the road. So, uh, again, market with sharrows, um, Merriam Drive in that area. A raised sidewalk here at the location in front of Farmer's Market, another raised sidewalk here at 48 Terrace. Uh, I will point out that, uh, that it does, says raised here, could be a raised or at-grade sidewalk, that'll be, um, crosswalk, that'll be something that'll probably be designed as the engineering part of it. Um, again, uh, continuing on down the south, to the south, sidewalks on both sides, another, uh, crosswalk. Then you see here Gateway Monument, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later as we talk about some ornamentation and monument stuff, uh, things for downtown. Um, but there is an idea of perhaps putting a gateway monument in there. And then the last thing I want to point out on there is this cross-section here, the street, um, proposed to be a three-lane cross-section, so a north-through lane, a south-dedicated left-turn lane, and a southbound, uh, right-turn, combination right-turn-through lane. Currently, the configuration at that corner, excuse me, at that intersection is actually a four-lane cross-section, uh, ones through north and then a dedicated left, a dedicated right, and a, uh, through south. So, um, traffic engineers did the engineering counts for it. Um, I don't think it'd create any surprise, Merriam Drive, while it's peaky, isn't, isn't have a lot of traffic on it. So they certainly felt that this configuration would serve the purposes for the traffic there, also give a little bit more sidewalk back, um, to, to, for pedestrians particularly on the west side. And then they've also have increased the amount of depth, so the, these, these stacking lanes are actually a little bit deeper than what the current stacking lanes are. So zooming a little bit closer here to, um, uh, Farmer's Market, first thing you're going to notice right here is this is the existing drive entryway, um, showing that to potentially be, uh, changed into, um, a pedestrian mall, pedestrian area, um, with the entryway going to, for being pushed to the north. I'll get into that just a little bit more here in just a second. Again, shared use path on the east side, um, got, uh, diagonal parking here. Now, this is an increase in per, in pavement, but this is, um, what property that the city, city owns, so we can readily do it without having to acquire right-of-way. Also, you notice kind of the design of the, uh, parking here does allow for a snowplow to come in and get out readily. Um, it isn't, doesn't enclose it off here. That was one of the things that the consultants were thinking about when they did that. Again, raised sidewalk with removable bollards. As I mentioned, that may be an at-grade sidewalk. Talk about the bollards here in just a second. And as you can see there, uh, again, shared street sharrows for, um, the bicycle lanes. So moving a little bit further to the north now, now we are here at, um, Farmer's Market. Up here to the north is 57th Street. Uh, want to, again, want to point out a number of things here, proposing to have a crosswalk at 57th Street, again, with removable bollards, um, having a sidewalk on the east side of, uh, of Merriam Drive. Now here, you can see the location of the proposed realignment for the north in, to make a north entryway point. You can see a, a large amount of additional parking here, so again, adding some, some parking that we need for, for the area downtown. Again, this is 5701, so this is property that the city owns, so there's not going to be a need to acquire additional right-of-way. Um, as we continue on south, again, raised or at-grade cut sidewalk, um, here is that pedestrian promenade. This was formerly the entrance, uh, to, uh, Farmer's Market and then the shared use path, shared use path on the west side. And then another crosswalk with bollard. A couple of things I do want to point out here, um, also is this here, three-lane cross, uh, three-lane configuration. Originally, the consultants had just shown a two-lane configuration to the advisory committee. Um, there were a number of comments from business owners here that they get, um, truck deliveries and those truck drivers just stop in the road and define directions to see where they're really going to drop things off. So they asked and, and the committee and the consultants agreed that was, uh, important to put back in the three-lane, uh, configuration here to give, um, truck traffic, well, perhaps not really whether this should stop, but that's, they will stop wherever they want to, to stop there in the middle of the road to get directions of where they're doing delivery to allow the through traffic to come through. Um, also, uh, there's a concern about turning radiuses to make sure that trucks can make the deliveries. Uh, we're adding some, uh, pavement here, so that increasing the ability to, uh, do the turning radius, um, and increasing the area for trucks to make that turn. So, whoops, one too many. There we go. And this kind of gets into what I was talking about with the removable bollards and how they'll do a better job of controlling traffic flow. So, um, for large events such as, um, uh, Turkey Creek Auto Show or maybe, uh, Turkey Creek Festival, if it were to come back to downtown, uh, could put bollards here at this crosswalk, put the bollards here at this crosswalk at 58 Terrace. And then traffic has the ability to readily, um, move around, um, the event. Uh, if anybody has sat down, it's usually a little bit further down here. If anybody's done the traffic control here, uh, volunteers as, as I have, you know that, um, it's always, the more things we can tell folks to go, go that direction, the better off we are. So it really would make a good flow of traffic for here. And then also, um, definitely increase the amount of area that we can show and have events. Again, food trucks could be here, uh, do vehicle displays here, really increases the area in which we have, um, surfaces to handle those types of things. And then also increasing the interaction between 5701 and Farmer's Market between these two areas, particularly, like I said, as you close off, uh, at 58 Terrace and 57th Street. And then if you had a little bit smaller events, um, and this is where the north entryway drive really, um, makes a lot of sense. Again, you could do the crosswalk, close it off with removable bollards right here, right in front of Farmer's Market. Again, have these at 58 Terrace. And then you could close off the area of Farmer's Market here and here, so this would be only pedestrians, um, and then you'd still be able to have traffic moving in and around Farmer's Market. So again, um, that was one of the reasons why the consultants really thought that moving it to the north would be, um, imperative. And, um, again, as we go through here, as I mentioned earlier, it's kind of a menu of ideas we could do, um, redoing the entryway point, um, that's probably going to be something that is going to be considered after, if we have the, have the capabilities and the financing after redoing the street, uh, to doing the redoing the street. But we do think that is definitely in the realm of possibility. So a little bit more as we, as we move further to the north, um, again, 57th Street. Um, here, we're seeing kind of the, the cross-section of street that's going to continue all the way up to Antioch Drive. We have the share-use path on the west side, three-lane cross-section, two through lanes and a center turn lane, and then a sidewalk on the east side. The sidewalk's going to vary, on the east side will vary in width as we have the ability for right-of-way and things like that. But this is, that's the cross-section that will go from, from 57th Street on up north to Antioch Drive and meet up with, again, as I mentioned earlier, the North Merriam Drive project. Uh, the one other thing I'd like to point out right here is, uh, we hear, uh, advisory committee heard some concerns about the queuing of, of buses as they come back. So we did see, the consultants did see the ability to, um, put in a right-turn lane for the buses. This is one of the entryways into, um, DS bus lines, so this is something that, uh, is being proposed. So I'm going to pause right there because that part there really is, like I said, kind of the meat and potatoes of stuff that we're going to, we would propose to hand off to the consultants. The next part of my presentation is getting more into the ornamentation and, and the streetscape and things like that. Again, stuff that we'll probably be able to consider as part of the project, but this is the main part. So any questions about what I just went through?
Ms. Yadrich, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so just to be clear, you're saying that the new entry to the marketplace is kind of on the line as to whether or not it's in phase one or not?
It is one of those things, again.
It's like a nice to have for phase one, but not?
It, it would be one of those things that's considered, but, um, if it's because perhaps when they found there's a lot of utilities in there, we won't be able to move it. Uh, perhaps the, uh, the found is just going to be, you know, just not going to be fiscally responsible to do something like that. So, um, it will be something I think is going to be considered as part of the engineering. Um, but, uh, unlike the, uh, street improvements that you see here, the on-street improvements, it's one of those things that we'll look at, it's like, okay, do, is that something we can afford to do? Is that something we want to do? Is that something, uh, fiscally smart to do? So, um, and that's kind of also the category of the next things I'll be showing you as well.
Cool. Thank you.
Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
Um, I was curious about this picture in particular. Um, what is the benefit of having events on the street opposed to in the Farmer's Market and maintaining the road for traffic?
Um, like a great example is Merriam Drive Live, closed off the street. Um, also, um, um, the Turkey Creek, um, Car Festival, closed down the street as well. And then the desire perhaps to maybe bring, um, the Turkey Creek Festival actually back to downtown, back to, uh, downtown where it originally was. So by closing off the street, definitely manages the traffic there, allows pedestrians to go back and forth, um, allows activities like food trucks to happen in there. Again, during the, um, Turkey Creek, um, uh, car show, the street is lined up with cars, um, up and down with people showing off their vehicles.
Ms. Lahey.
I have one, this may be a question also for Darren. What is the threshold for where bikes are supposed to be on the street versus sidewalk versus shared use path? Because isn't, isn't a bike vehicle, I mean, what bikes can ride on the sidewalk without?
Well, in regards to sidewalks, and I'll, if I'm wrong, the chief can correct me, we do not have a law that does not allow bikes to ride on the sidewalk, so they can ride on the sidewalk. So that's perfectly acceptable. Um, in regards to everything else, um, they're going to fit within, uh, the guidelines for Ashtoe, so the Ashtoe Guidelines and things like that for that describe the, um, width of bike lanes, how the bike lanes are marked and all that. So, um, it's going to fit, fit, all everything that we're showing here will fit within the accepted guidelines for street markings and things like that.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
Conceptually, how many more parking places are we thinking we're going to bring in?
I can get you that info? I forgot to write that down. I will, I got that. We have that and I will.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah, I will get that for you. Yeah, I can't remember, is it? I may have.
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven for angle parking, yes, thank you, yeah, fifty-seven.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, ladies.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to point out that they said that we could switch the angle of the parking too, if we wanted to turn those into back-end parking versus traditional pull-in parking, just so the flexibility of the way the, the medians are designed. I think that's, I thought that was exciting, just to know that we could progress as people became more comfortable with the, the angled parking.
And just to, this is a great slide that shows that. So right now, this is showing traditional pull-in angle parking, but if there's a desire to do the back-end angle parking, it could be readily be, uh, turned around to facilitate that.
Ms. Yadrich, go ahead.
Just be restriped. There would no be, you're going to have to redo the curbs or the gutters or anything, just new striping.
I do have a question about the bike, um, path. So the sec, the bike path goes, it's a shared use path all the way until that first, that it goes, I'm just wondering, so is there a slide that shows, yeah, that one?
It's a shared use path all the way up to Antioch Drive.
All the way up to Antioch, but it crosses the street.
It does not. It stays on the west side all the way up.
So the current path that runs along the east side?
Would stay there, yes.
Would stay there and there's an additional path then that will go in? Okay, just want to clarify, two paths.
Any other questions? For Director Dyer.
All right, if there's.
Just move on to part two.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, again, now we're getting more again into, so kind of the menu of things that if the funding's there, if it makes fiscal sense that, that we could proceed with. Um, I think it's also important to note that some of these things that we may decide not to do it now, but we're going to, with the redo of the street in 2023, um, be able to design the street so if there is a desire, you know, five years from now to do it, you could still come back in and, and, and put that amenity there. So, um, the advisory committee looked at our current, uh, downtown, looked at the positives of it, looked at the strengths of it, and one of the things that they really liked was kind of the traditional look of it. Uh, so they really also liked maybe a little bit of the modern look as well, some of that things, so kind of did a little blending of it, combination. We would, consultants call it a transitional-inspired, uh, look. And what that kind, what that means is, um, really liked some of the looks, particularly the downtown streetlights, but also wanted to perhaps go a little bit more, uh, modern with some of the furniture and things like that for downtown. So, um, also, uh, kind of here's some really ideas, as the consultants like to do, is call it a streetscape kit of parts. So, um, you can see here, one of some of the things that they have in the, in these next coming slides, a gateway feature, identity signage, uh, streetlights, uh, overhead lighting, um, seating and other things like that. So, and here you can see the differences between the raised, raised crosswalk and perhaps the at-grade crosswalks, again, depending on how the engineering works, and some really cool ideas for, for downtown paving. So, um, not surprising, uh, the committee really liked our current streetlights and really wanted to continue going with the, forward with the look of those streetlights. Uh, streetlights would be LED, they would have brackets for, um, banners, as you can see right here is a great picture of banners and also for the beautiful flower baskets that we do. Um, and then also the addition would have, uh, the new streetlights would have the ability to put flags on it for, our flags, uh, flags for freedom display. So, again, really be a great addition for, uh, downtown. Um, kind of the, and then looked at some seating, some benches, um, really, uh, one of the big things that everybody liked about this is that it were wood benches, um, and anybody that's sat down on a metal bench and the depth of a good Kansas summer knows that those can get a little warm. So really liked the idea of doing, um, perhaps a wood bench, a high-wear wood bench that, um, would perhaps, uh, less of a chance of scalding, uh, people's backsides. And then, um, again, as we're trying to increase the amount of, of bicycles downtown, need to do some bike amenities such as, um, bike racks. Um, landscape planners, I know we used to have landscape planners downtown and there was always an issue of who maintains them, who doesn't maintain them. Uh, the idea would be that the city with the 2023 project did put on landscape planners, it would be a city maintained thing, would be something that we would do for the, for, for the near, for, for the near term. Um, again, back to the, uh, crosswalks, here's some examples of the at-grades and the raised ones. Here's a good example of what the recommended, uh, look of the bollards would be. Again, those would be removable, obviously. I think this is really neat, um, the idea for some, uh, refinding signage downtown. Uh, really, we looked at these four different design, um, ideas. Uh, obviously, this one seemed to be the one that fits Merriam perfectly, just right, since it has our logo on it and also has, um, an area for banner on here for, during different events, so that's a recommendation of that. Here's a great, uh, rendering of it, of Sioux Falls. You can see a temporary banner that's covering their signage and here's a rendering of what it would look like perhaps for, um, Merriam Downtown signage. As you can also see, they're showing a base made out of limestone. This carries over, um, from the Farmer's Market, uh, the canopy there really has a base in limestone as well as still time, the art project that's downtown that, um, is also made of primarily limestone. Um, overhead lighting, uh, great feature. Uh, again, this might be something that's not installed with 2023, but obviously the light poles and electricity could be installed with 2020, uh, with the 2023 project, so it could be done in a future time. Um, some of the paving, this is again, really some interesting stuff, uh, lots of different ideas for how we could do paving. Uh, consultants, advisory committee really centered upon this one down here. Downtown has some musical influences, have, uh, Kansas City Strings as, as well as guitar lamps, both kind of the idea of looking at this, uh, pavement here of, of notes of music or perhaps fingering on a fretboard. So this was the idea to go forward with on that. And here's a little bit better look of how that could be done with scored and colored concrete, uh, or pavers. And here's an artist's rendering of what that would look like in downtown. Again, um, different color, uh, color, color paving here as well as, um, pavers perhaps over here, so again, showing kind of a fretboard and fingering. Here's an excellent artist's rendering of how that could look. Um, here is True Auto, here is, uh, KC Strings right here. Um, you can see how this could flow down the, down, uh, Merriam Drive. And then as it gets out of Merriam Drive further to the north, these, uh, things could be spaced further apart, not so close together. Little bit of overhead view of it, uh, again, now you're starting to see the, the gate potential area, location of a gateway feature. Seeing some bumpouts here, um, mainly for the reasons for that is to make it easier for bus, pedestrians to come, go across, but still maintaining the existing, um, parallel parking along, um, Merriam Drive. And here, as I mentioned earlier, um, here is a, a conceptual idea of what a gateway feature could look like, really taking cues off of the existing Merriam Marketplace canopy. And then a possible location or suggested location of the gateway feature is right here. Um, here, this is Johnson Drive, Merriam Drive, so this is, uh, the barber shop, this is the, um, pet grooming facility. Right here is still time and this is the city-owned parking lot. So really good visibility if you put the downtown gateway feature right here. So good visibility as folks come down, um, drive down Johnson Drive and obviously Merriam Drive. So just kind of wrap things up, kind of a little bit of an overview of, of how Merriam Drive could potentially look after the 2023, um, revisions. Uh, again, Merriam Town Center, 5701, um, kind of as you can see, not Merriam Town Center, excuse me, uh, from Merriam Farmer's Market, um, 5701, uh, here's the pedestrian promenade, Center, excuse me, for Merriam Farmers Market, 5701. Here's the pedestrian promenade, the north entryway point, kind of looking at some artist renderings of how the entryway feature could look. Here it is, again, some more artist renderings of it during the night. Here's kind of how Farmers Market looks right now. And then with the pedestrian promenade put in and the north entryway point, along with the on-street parking, how it fits with 5701 across the street. And then finally, again, whoops, that, a look of how it would look with the pedestrian promenade and the north entryway point. So that is really, that is the end of my presentation. Again, apologize for the length of it. But what we're looking for just this evening is consensus from the city council that you're comfortable with giving that conceptual design to the engineers to have them start doing the engineering work and putting together the design for Merriam Drive for the 2023 redo. So with that, happy to answer questions.
Any other questions for Director Dyer? Okay, Ms. Silver.
I just have one question. I had been attending these meetings, so I know it's kind of late in the process. But it came up in our last meeting, talking about the musical threat. I'm not a music guy. The what? The fret, thank you. And finger markings on the sidewalk. And since we are so entrenched in the automotive industry, I would recommend that we would maybe show a waveform of like a well-tuned Hemi exhaust system or something that ties it more into the automotive industry. And I mean, you're laughing, but but we have so much more auto industry in our downtown than we do music, that it just, I don't see the connection there. So.
Well, and we also talked about railroad, and I don't know where that went away as well, but.
Well, that's kind of, I think it does still kind of invoke railroad ties as you go across there as well, across that. So again, those, the paving details are, again, important to bring up and discuss. The, like I said, the meat and potatoes of it is that street configuration that I showed, showing three-lane cross-section, bike path on the west side, angle parking. That is the main thing that the engineers are going to be needing.
It appears that we have basically a middle turn lane and then two lanes, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is it, how is that working out in Shawnee? I don't know. It's a whole different project. But I've heard complaints about them going from four lanes to three lanes. And are we going to be?
Well, that portion of Shawnee, that portion in Shawnee is quite a bit heavier traffic than what Merriam Drive has. The consultants or traffic engineers have showed the Merriam Drive, number of vehicles in Merriam Drive, and I don't have it with me this evening, is definitely way below, quite a bit below the threshold of needing a four-lane cross-section. So again, they are confident that it'll be, it'll be adequate for it.
But I'm confident people will complain.
And we'll send them to you, Mr. Engel.
I'm confident. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So so I am supportive of it, of this concept for sure. And I am super excited about moving the entrance to the marketplace because I see so much potential for that. So anything we can do to encourage that would be great.
And I think that is probably on the menu of lists, that's probably the number one, very high on the menu of lists there, yes.
Thank you.
When this is submitted to BHC, they're going to try to design all of it, and it's just going to come down to what we can afford. And I'll remind the council that we actually put a supplemental downtown line item in the CIP that has some additional funding that we could choose to reallocate from just that downtown funding source to the to the Cars Project, which was by design.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that's priority one.
Ms. Yadrick, go ahead.
Is this a good time for me to mention that we do have materials that we saved from 5701 that could potentially be used to build some of the kit of parts things?
I do think that was brought up in some of the advisory committee meetings as well. So I think that will be something we'll all have to keep in front of mind as we're going through some of these more decorative features and things like that.
Cool.
Ms. Rader, go ahead.
Could the gateway be an art project, too?
A potential, sure.
Instead of putting it in the project cost if we needed to, just throwing it out there?
Yeah, we, we, again, we'll cost all of those things out and come back to council. And I'm sure we will also present a way to fund all of them and let the council decide on which pieces and parts they would be in agreement for funding.
I think the thing in that gateway that you had, I mean, the big empty space, there could be a clock. I'm just thinking, because we don't have any clock towers down in downtown.
I don't think we can drive 88 miles an hour down Merriam Drive.
Yeah, my only main concern, obviously, this whole project is, and I know you're on top of it, but it's still, reiterate, all the the water lines going down Merriam Drive, that that get fixed before we redo this project. That's just, I would hate to do all this. And then I have all these water leaks come back up, and we have all this patching going on again. Please stress, stress to Water One that we are really concerned about that. So.
Mr. McDonald will be definitely doing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Dyer?
So just to conclude, it looks like there's consensus that you're comfortable with passing this on to the engineering firm. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, let's see. What do we have next here? Looks like we're CIP update. Director McDowell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get this pulled up. Okay, I have your March CIP update. Our West Frontage Road is the first project we'll talk about. That was the West Frontage Road improvements from 75th Street to Turkey Creek Drive, which is the roundabout. We opened bids on Friday, March 11. And we had two contractors that bid that project. Phoenix Engineering is currently reviewing those bids, and we are in the process of having the utilities be relocated from Water One and Google Fiber on that project. Staff is currently working with BHC Engineering on the design for the 55th Street Improvement Project, which is a Merriam, 55th from Merriam Drive to West City Limits. Last week, we met with Evergy on the relocation for the utilities on the south side. They stated they are approximately 90 days out from starting the utility relocation, and that seems to fit well with our project. We plan on going out to bid sometime in June for that project. Our Mill and Overlay Program, Phoenix Concrete, was awarded that contract. Staff is currently working with Phoenix on a start date for that project. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next week. And the streets included in that Mill and Overlay are Hocker Drive, Farley Street, from 55th to 57th, West 57th Street, Wed Street, Wed Place, and 66 Terrace, which is in the Timber Ridge Villas. And then I have the BHC has started on the design for the Merriam Drive downtown street improvement. I've got good news. I had a meeting with Water One today, and they are replacing that water line from Johnson Drive all the way to 55th. We are working with them to try to include that as part of the project. In doing so with that, that would minimize the impact to motorists and the businesses down there. Instead of them going ahead and moving the line, we're going to try to include it with the with the project on their cost.
Awesome.
And the last thing I have to mention is our spring limb pickup is March 28 through April 1. So if everyone wanted to get their stuff ready for us to pick those items up. So I'm here to answer any questions on anything you have.
Ms. Yadrick.
Is the West 57th Street portion of Mill and Overlay, does that include West 57th Place as well, where that same intersection is? So like both cul-de-sacs, or is it just west?
It's just West 57.
Just west of Knox?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions for Director McDonald?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. That's just informational item. Again, part merkish, but nothing particularly there. Mr. Engel, do we have anything from staff?
Just to, I think everybody's read the paper or seen the PV post, but the federal omnibus spending bill included $500,000 to fund the ongoing Upper Turkey Creek Project. Staff received a call from Representative Davids and one of her staff members on Wednesday night to share the good news with us. So thanks to her for earmarking that and her continuing to shepherd that through all of the various iterations of that funding bill over the course of the last year. Monday, the 21st, a week from today, she'll be conducting a press conference at Merriam Marketplace, probably across the creek, so you can see the creek, at 10 o'clock. So from 10 to 10:45, I think it is, I'll make sure I push those times out. I might have that shift by 15 or 20 minutes, but it's somewhere between 10 and 11 o'clock. And you are all invited, per her office staff. And we're trying to get some of the businesses downtown to also show up and perhaps share their excitement about the funding of that program. To address the funding of that program, really what that does is it just continues us being able to work with the Corps the way that the Army Corps works, is similar to an engineering firm or a law firm. They have to have a cost center to budget their time to. They have not had any money for years to budget that. So while we can get them to answer the phone, we can't get them to come to lunch. We might be able to get them to come to lunch now and have some conversations because they actually have a cost center to build that, too. So it doesn't guarantee anything's going to move forward. As grateful as we are for the funding, it's just, I don't want to get anyone's hopes up. It just simply says that we can continue to refine that project and strategize how we do get the eventual funding for it. But we'll be working with the Corps in the weeks to come.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Engel, besides that?
No, sir.
Does anybody on the council have anything? It looks like none. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Ms. Hans.
I so move.
We have a motion. Ms. Yadrick, we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.